I'd like to start off by acknowledging all the community members, community members who are here tonight and who have written to us over the last week since our last meeting. And as I was speaking with some folks in the hall, we really do hear you and we read everything that you send in and we do appreciate it. We're all up here because we're parents and we have kids that are in the district and many of them have special needs and so we do know that we do hear you. I know we can feel the frustration and so I recognize that. I also wanted to correct a clerical error on our posted agenda which failed to mention literacy as a future agenda item. I don't know if people were looking on the web or not. I know Mr. Brady had requested that at the last meeting and so that is a future agenda item. Our next meeting on the 30th however is a special meeting to vote the budget, so it's not part of that. Vice Chair Bergstrom and I and Dr. Hackett and members of his team have been working on how best to address some of the concerns raised by the community. And we expect to have that on an agenda in February and it sounds like Dr. Hackett thinks maybe early February, so if that timeframe works for you, we appreciate that. With that, I'd like to move into public comment. And we have a microphone over there. We are running very late, so I do ask people to be brief if they can, but as per our guidelines here, public comment is for a period of 20 minutes. It generally allows about six or seven speakers. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and street of residence and shall speak for no longer than three minutes each. All remarks will be addressed to the chair of the meeting. Public comment is not a debate, discussion, or dialogue between citizens in the committee, so committee members are not going to respond, but we are here to listen. Public comment is the citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting for committee members to review and be considered at an appropriate time. And you can send remarks to schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org. Ms. Bergstrom will be our timekeeper. And I see we have someone already up at the microphone, so please let us know who you are and your street of residence.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Dr. Shannon Stott of 32 Pilgrim Drive and I'm speaking on behalf of the members of WINPAC Winchester Special Education Parent Advisory Council. WINPAC would like to offer public comment following the recent Boston Globe highlight on outdated methods used to teach literacy with Winchester featured as one of the districts. While the article focuses on instruction in the general education classroom, it also discusses the impact on children receiving special education services. Further, it highlights the inequities that result for the special education communities in the most affluent districts in Massachusetts. WINPAC has heard testimonies from many families in our district sharing how our district's approach of teacher-led curriculum impacts their children. Without having a curriculum that is consistent and cumulative across the district, children receiving services do not have equal access to tools needed to achieve their individual goals. If a family moves to a different address or simply assigned to a different teacher in the same school, these children might experience a different phonics approach, math curriculum, or literacy instruction. For these children that are already facing great challenges, this can further destabilize their efforts to succeed. For more than a year, WINPAC has requested during our meetings with the special education director Heather Geary, who's no longer here, to discuss the reading curriculum with the response being that it's not a special education discussion, but a curriculum-level discussion to be discussed by the district leadership at a future school committee meeting. Yet, one cannot separate our general education curriculum from our special education curriculum. These decisions impact all students of all profiles. Children entering the special education space from the general education classroom, often after a long period of receiving more of the same to see if they can improve. Further, the goal is always to have our special education students thrive and, when appropriate, return to the general education classroom. During their time on IEPs, our district works closely with these students, providing services with structured literacy methods. Yet, in our current model, after working incredibly hard with the appropriate tools, if successful, our children are rewarded by being returned to a classroom that is using a literacy model whose own founder has shared that it's not appropriate for students with dyslexia. We would also like to note that while this curriculum discussion often centers on students with dyslexia, it also impacts children with executive functioning weaknesses in most areas of autism. Indeed, in the special education space, each child is viewed as an individual with the goal of meeting their personal needs. Yet, to provide effective instruction, our teachers should be given the proper tools with which they can build a personalized approach. I work at Mass General where each patient is seen as having unique needs. Yet, we also lead with evidence-based methods in our effort to care for individuals. Similarly, there is a need for scientifically-backed systemic and cumulative literacy instruction that is consistent across town. In closing, WINPAC would like to request that this topic be included in upcoming school committee agenda. I'm happy to hear at the beginning that this is going to be happening. Further, we hope that the district can define an approach to achieve an equitable and systemic K-3 curriculum across all of our schools. As always, WINPAC is more than happy to work with the district, helping to align critical voices in the discussion. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Do we have another speaker? Four, two?
Hi. Good evening. Susan DeLeo, 24 Tap Drive. I just wanted to speak about the possibility of the school committee adding a public hearing on the literacy issue so that parents could have a Q and A with the school committee itself about this issue. I understand that Dr. Hackett has added a parent-to-parent conversation. I think it's important that the school committee also has a dialogue with parents about this. I understand it's on your February 7th agenda, but it'll just be a public comment where there is no dialogue between the school committee members. And unfortunately, there are no longer office hours, which were really invaluable. Maybe we could return to those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the meeting date is the 13th is their first meeting in February. Mr. Swan?
Hello. John Swan, 354 Cambridge. I'm a parent of four. I married way up. A lot of people know my wife, Robyn. Yes, she is the hat lady, so if your kids have L hats, that is her. We also, with our kids, we have experience with 504s. We have experience with IEPs. We have experience with, you kind of name it. We have kids from fourth grade up through, heading to college next year. And a lot of things that go into their education being successful. Literacy for me has always been a foundation because without that, you cannot adequately address any other subject. I was talking with a friend. I thought maybe interpretive dance was one of them because that was his major in college, but he told me that he actually didn't even know how to read pretty well to get through interpretive dance. But literacy has become somehow a four-letter word. Yes, I went to public schools in rural Montana, so I know literacy is more than indeed four letters. And I've been struggling with the why. And maybe it's because as parents, we get excited and emotional about it because it's our kids. And when we do have the meeting, I guess, and I do have a point to this if you're wondering if you think I'm just rambling, is any type of process for the public to engage ahead of time, whether that is through the parent-to-parent, as you mentioned, Dr. Hackett, or even, I guess there is obviously a school committee email address, but a way that we can ask the questions. I think a lot of this, for me at least, is being obsessed about the problem and then figuring out which solutions could be helpful. And then lastly, the part that I think a lot about is the impact on and from teachers. So when I think about education and how I got to where even I was, it was probably because of a few great educators. And a couple of them are still around. And I've reached out to them and have just asked them a few questions. One was an English teacher. And he also then got on the school committee. And I worry that in terms of the conversations I've had with a lot of school teachers, that they've given me the "don't tell my name" and "I never will." And it seems like a little bit skittish. And I just come back and I ask why. Why does it have to be that way? Why can't we do more of getting together? The internet is a great place to visit. It is a horrible place to live. And so the more that we can find ways to spend time together actually wrestling through this problem, the better. And I'm willing to, I think, like a lot of people, volunteer our time to do it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. It looks like there's no one else for public comment, so I do want to thank those of you who spoke during public comment. We do hear what you're saying. Again, we're all parents. Many of us have kids with learning disabilities and know that, please assume positive intent. We're not the enemy. We do want to work the problem. So with that, I'd like to close public comment and we'll move on into reports, updates, action items with superintendent's report next.
I'm going to yield my time, given we have guests here tonight to speak specifically to a few things. And we have a meeting, the budget next week, and it's already been stated. I think we were clear that I will be bringing and continue to work with Ms. Hopcroft, Ms. Bergstrom, and my team and through teachers and our literacy specialists to come up with a recommendation for a process that we can do just what I think Mrs. Swan is getting at. I 100% agree. I think I said it. I think we need to make sure that we find a way to create a safe space for everyone who wants to contribute to this discussion and that we hear each other. And I'm also a parent. I just don't play one on TV. And I've got a 20-year-old who moved back in. He wasn't going to college yet, so if there's some solutions for that, I'd also like to put that on the table as part of that process. But as Mr. Hopcroft said, there isn't anybody up here, and I can tell you I've worked with a lot of school committees, that care as deeply about your kids and have no agenda other than caring about your kids than this committee that you see in front of you. We are very fortunate. I'm not just saying that because they also happen to be my employer, but I came here for a lot of reasons. I came here for the community support for education. I think we need to get back to a place. And whatever failing I have in this whole discussion, and I've said this to several people, I have not been able to find a way to get this discussion going in a way that we're not yelling at each other, in a way that we're listening, and in the way that everybody feels safe and that they can have a voice, even those who aren't able to, for whatever reason, come and speak in front of a committee. So we're all interested in this. There was a lot of assumptions tonight that I did the best I could not to address, but we need to also get the information out. Because it's not kids walking into a classroom and there's a bucket of books in the corner and the teacher says, "Go read." We all know that there's a lot going on and we address many of the elements of structured literacy. Not defending, not saying we do it right. We know we have room to grow. And that's what I hope. We can create a process that's facilitated with some outside group to try to take the heat off and get a good objective view so that we can get back to work as a school community because Winchester still has one of the best school systems in the state. So I think that we want to make sure that we understand that too and that we've got great people doing great work. So I said more than I intended
And I've talked with a lot of, a lot of parents, but also a lot of administrators, a lot of teachers. There is no one that doesn't have our kids as their absolute top priority. These are people who have spent their entire career, you know, getting PhDs and other advanced degrees in this area, putting in, you know, hundreds of hours of professional development, learning the structured literacy approaches, you know, they're, we're all on the same side here. And so, I know it's been difficult, and, you know, conversations have been chilled, and at times, you know, felt adversarial. And I do think, as was mentioned in public comment, and as Dr. Hackett mentioned, you know, we need to work the problem. And, you know, I think all of us, you know, those in the district, and those of us who are parents, and those of us who are both, you know, need to put aside, you know, our, perhaps our, all of our conceived notions about exactly how every little piece of this is going to work out, and just say, "What's the thing that we can do that's best for our kids?" And so, you know, I do look forward to that process. And again, I wasn't going to say much either, but so...
It feels so good to talk!
I'll stop, I'll stop there. And invite our student reps, if they have anything to say, do you have anything you want to say? Good, okay. We appreciate your participation in our meetings. All right. With that, it is only 8:06, he says. Ah, that's a timer. Funny. Let's move on to report, update, and action items. And so, our first item is the 25 budget deliberations.
Could I make a, I was going to say, could I make a request of the committee that we move to the Mystic HVAC and Lincoln Chiller first, as we have several members of our select board and town employees here to help us with that topic?
All right. All right. So we'll move on to facilities. Let's address the Mystic HVAC as our first item.
So, I'll just kick us off. As you know, the select board has been having a conversation around Mystic, and in and among the conversations they've been having, not to speak for them, about the many capital projects and capital items that need to be addressed at some point in time. Mystic has, Mr. Lawson's here tonight, can speak to the challenges that Mystic continues to present. And I believe that, you know, I think what is intended tonight is to hear that information for you to be able to ask questions. And, I don't know who wants to start off. Do you want to start off, John, or?
Sure. I'm going to go ahead and recognize John, so people know who he is.
Oh, yeah. John Talon from the select board. Do you want to, you can grab one of those or come here.
Or come on up with us.
I'll just take this one.
You're welcome to come up, John. Whatever's easy.
We'll just toss this one to you.
To Town Meeting Redux.
Yes. This is Mike. All right, so, thank you for your time this evening, and Pete, Nick, and I are here to, well, explain the situation at Mystic. I think you, I know Michelle, Tom, you're aware of it, many others are aware of it, and seek your permission to replace the heating system. We've identified funding sources and are committed to engineering and the demolition and installation of a new system. And Pete, if you want to step up here and talk about this, but I just wanted to indulge for two minutes. I have seven kids, all went through Winchester, all went to UMass, two PhDs, kid went to top-five business school, and had one keep going to law school. So you guys are doing a great job, so thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thanks. John, before you leave, could I just ask you to clarify for the committee?
Yes.
In case everybody wasn't at your meeting, the select board has voted already to allocate ARPA funds to an engineering study for this, or not?
Yes, yes. We, and that is going to go out this Wednesday, Pete?
So, the request for proposals go out tomorrow, and will be due in two weeks from tomorrow.
And so, last night, we had a discussion about, okay, we understand the urgency of getting this done, because there's 500 children there, 90% of them are Winchester residents' kids. So we don't want to inconvenience any of those parents, because I have firsthand experience with that, and it's not fun, especially in an emergency kind of situation. So we had a discussion about options for funding it, and we've identified several sources, including ARPA, but not solely ARPA, to fund that.
To fund the engineering?
To fund engineering and the construction. Because we understand, we have a sense, we have a budget number, an engineer's estimate. But until we, until the job is, we get the engineering back, and then we understand the full extent of what needs to be done, because there's some, there's just a broad range of possibilities, including the potential need for an electrical upgrade. We don't know what the final number of construction is, and then we really won't know it until it goes to bid. So that could be going to bid in June with a fairly quick turnaround, maybe you get that back by July, something like that, July 1st. And Pete's much more versed in this, he can talk about that. But we feel that we have enough flexibility and identified sources to get this work done this year. If we get, could it get it done this summer, if that's possible, and we don't know yet, that would be our preference. And Pete, you can address that.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here to speak about it. The Mystic school was built in the '20s, there was a major addition on it in the '50s. The heating system is of that age, so considering it was the '20s, much of the steam piping and units that run the building are 100 years old at this point. We're experiencing many more leaks than we have in the past in the steam system. The piping throughout the building is corroded, and it is, for the most part, wrapped with asbestos insulation. It has great demands when it starts to leak, and how we respond at periods of time shutting down areas of the building. It's almost like it's fallen off the cliff this year, as far as how many issues we've already had, and how much impact it's had to these programs there. The building is an old steam system, as we talked about, and a couple of years ago, we actually rebuilt the boiler to a degree so that we could extend its life while we figured out what to do with the system. And also, we looked at it for the last couple of years for electrification projects, working with the Energy Management Committee, which I sit on. We've looked at different aspects of it, and we'd also looked at the Town Hall at the same time for such an upgrade as well. The difference with the Mystic and the Town Hall is the Mystic heating system is failing. We have more time to deal with what we have to do at the Town Hall, but there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, the school needs a new heating system. It is a perfect candidate for the electrification. We have had a engineering study through the utilities to look at the preliminaries of putting one in there, and it's very feasible. Again, we need to move forward with this first level of, or second level of engineering to take into consideration what the needs of the new system are, if it's going to be an overall increase of electricity to the building, what will have to be demoed for asbestos, what the timelines will be, and try to ascertain if we can do a phase project with some occupation. But there's a lot of moving parts to determine whether we can, you know, one, fast-track it, two, you know, if we're allowed to be able to keep people in the building, and then get a final dollar, cost estimate for final funding on it, taking all those things into consideration. For 20 years that I've been doing this, there's, you know, there's been continued occupation of the building. It's not, you know, like a building off to the side that occasionally gets used. It is a fully functioning town asset that needs to be maintained, and it's sometimes a challenge because it sits out on the peripheral and discussion usually, so. I can talk forever, so you got to shut me up when you're heard enough.
Pete, can you talk a little bit about the amount of resources that the DBW, people want?
Sure. We have a very small staff to take care of all the town buildings, very appreciative of what we receive to do the job, but we are spending an awful lot of time and resource just to try and maintain heat, or at times even regulate heat at that building. We have guys that go there early in the morning, on overtime, to make a sweep of the building, make sure we're not walking into problems. We've had a lot of work with controls companies, trying to keep up the old pneumatic controls that are failing. They're an old technology, there aren't very many people that do it and do it well still. And we, you know, steam fitters are in there. We've just recently spent two full days chasing down steam-related problems with the firm and our own people. So, when we have all the challenges of everything else, this is a real resource drain over at that building.
So, just two things. Frank, you mentioned a lot about investment in teachers, and when Tom and Michelle and I were over there, the teachers commented about how invested they are in teaching those kids and addressing their needs while they're wearing the down coats around. So that really resonated with me. We have an obligation to the kids, we have also an obligation to the staff there. And I'm sure that some of the committee members may have a question about, well, if you do that work, what's the phasing look like? What's the communication been to other stakeholders? And Nick, can you address some of that? Well, I know you can, so, thanks.
Nick Cacciolia, Recreation Director. Thanks for having me tonight. Just mirroring what Pete said, you know, it's not only a drain for the DBW, but there's a lot of drain in our staff, too, and all the things that we need to do. In terms of if this is able to move forward, and there's a lot of logistical things, and we're trying to get this, you know, caught up, the good news is that the Recreation Department is the king of contingency. We can mobilize, we can figure out a way, as long as we know what the path is going to be. Of course, for us, the best time to do it is the summer. There's more availability in the town for buildings and in working with our contingency. We've had discussions with Kids Corner, who is the leasur that runs the first floor. Andrew and I have talked, you know, about what we would do if we needed to shut down, if it can't be phased. There's several different plans that we've already started to come up with. We've talked to the School Department preliminary with Andrew about summer space and summer usage. The good news is that, you know, the staff that we have are able to change on a dime. We're used to it. Our building sometimes makes us do that, so we're willing to do whatever it needs to The issue is if the building does go down, if we do get to a point where a catastrophic failure happens during a cold snap, and we have to shut down because of EEC standards, there's no place for us to go during the school year. Extending it out to next year seems to be like an unbelievable risk. And just the Recreation Department alone, not counting Kids Corner, if we shut down for a month, we're looking at between $117,000, $150,000 in lost revenue, not including the staff time that we'd probably have to pay. It would be worse than what happened during COVID in terms of the shutdown, because we're running more programs, our budget is a lot bigger, and the town relies on us a lot more than they did several years ago. We have a full program for after-school care, our preschool program's practically full. We have 60 kids on our after-school waiting list. I know Kids Borough has waiting lists at their after-school care, and I know Kids Corner has wait lists in their after-school care. This is a resource the town desperately relies on, and we have, childcare is one of those things that we just don't have enough supply for the demand in this town. So if we had to shut down those two large after-school programs, we're talking 120 kids in Kids Corner, and 150 kids a day in RAP. That's a lot of families that will be scrambling without childcare. So, for us, this is the number-one priority, and if it can be done, and if there's a way to get it done, I know the Select Board had a really good discussion last night about funding and earmarking money, that we've talked about grant opportunities. There's a really promising grant through Mass Save that looks like we would qualify, it could happen rather quickly, once the engineering design is up, where we can get almost half a million dollars, I think the number was $480,000 for the grant. So, there seems to be a path that's opening up, and I think it's very important to invest in this project.
Committee questions?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Nixon, as our capital representative, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Mr. Nixon?
Sure. So, if you guys can hear me, in all the years I've been on Capitol, and working with Pete, and we've listened together over the summers, Pete, as the committee knows, there are capital, capital projects that we discuss and we advocate for, that may be program-based or particularly large, big-ticket items, but there are a long list of renewal and replacement items that Pete advocates for as our Building Facilities Manager. And for many years, there really been three priorities at Mystic. It's been the windows, replacing the windows, it's been heat, and it's been the building electrical service. In some years, electrical service has been the priority, in other years, it's been something else. So, I think with the, and I appreciate everybody, Pete being here, Nick and John, I think, to some degree, what the committee...
Sorry, Seamus. Sorry, Seamus.
So, I think what the committee is trying to come up to speed very quickly on is that over the summer, so in July, Mystic Heat, the request for actually the engineering, the design and the engineering money, I think was priority five out of 12. And as we know, in August, we had three other additional priorities come forward, including some of the playgrounds. So it really wound up sort of priority eight out of 15, still for the design money. I personally, I mean, I would remind everybody, it's the Select Board's decision how to spend their ARPA money. I was really pleased, actually, John, and Mike, when the board voted to put the ARPA money towards that, because every time Pete talks about the heat, you know, the message is, we're really stretching this out. It's becoming more and more difficult to manage. My observation would be, you know, we typically fund major school projects and building system projects right here in this room at Fall Town Meeting, so that we can complete work, get it bid, and get it done over the summer. And when we, when we fund those kinds of projects at Fall Town Meeting, that's on the heels of some initial conceptual schematic exercise, right, and a cost estimate. I don't know that that's happened in this instance, so that makes me a little concerned just about the timing piece. I heard, actually, in December for the first time, and John, I think you were with me at the table, when, you know, we heard from the town manager that this was really becoming a priority, and her preference would be to do it this coming summer, not Summer '25. So what I shared then, and I've shared this with, you know, the Chair of the Select Board, we have an obligation to, I mean, all of the students in the district, Nick's kids as well, but we have a specific obligation to Kids Corner, you know, who's a tenant. There are many families who rely on the Mystic School for childcare, but not nine months out of the year, 12 months out of the year, even during the summer months. So, I did express some concern in December that, you know, if we're going to move anybody out of the building, it's important that we come up with a plan, like, where are they going to go? They may not, you know, REC and Kids Corner may not actually go to the same place. What impact does that have on them? What impact does that have on families? Kids Corner, there's summer programming, and Nick, I don't know what you've advertised, you know, for REC, but Kids Corner's summer childcare has been advertised for almost two months. They actually started taking payments last week on Monday. And I've confirmed that many of the kids who go there during the summer, they get dropped off, they actually walk home, or if they're old enough, they ride their bike. So, for those kids, they're walking home or they're riding home, because wherever home is, it's, you know, proximate to Mystic. So, if we're shutting down Mystic to do the work, which, you know, I know, Pete, you've previously felt like that would be necessary, I, that would be my gut, just given the scope of demolition and abatement, I think it would really slow down the actual work to have kind of phased occupancy of the building. My concern is families are making financial commitments towards summer childcare, and I haven't done that myself, but some families, they're doing it because they're thinking ahead and they're planning. You know, we could be leaving some families in the lurch if we're saying, "Oops, it's actually not here." Where it goes, I don't know. That needs to be part of the discussion, you know, that needs to be part of the plan. I totally... I totally support getting this work done. I'm thrilled that the board has taken ARPA money to fund it. I, you know, if I were a board member, I would be really interested in understanding what that initial engineering work looks like, what the estimate is. Nick or Peter, John, one of you just made the point earlier about, you know, what sort of upgrades may be necessary on the electrical service. We may find that there's something else that needs to be done. And even if this 1.5-ish number turns out to be about right for this mechanical piece, there may be some other scope that's necessary, right? And do we find ourselves then in a place where, oops, suddenly we don't have the money to do it? I understand when circumstances change, right, you need to change your perspective, and that's partly why I appreciate the board is moving forward with design and not waiting, you know, till Spring Town Meeting, which they could have done. I just have some concerns about if, here's my message to the town manager and the Select Board Chair a couple of weeks ago, was that I think for, when the board met on January 8th, the request was, if it's really felt that this has to happen Summer '24, if it has to happen, we need to know that, and then we need to start acting on that. That means we need to communicate with, you know, the tenants in the building, what role does the district play in finding space, which is much more difficult, Summer '24 versus Summer '25, when things like Parkhurst become available. So it's really just about figuring out, does it have to happen this summer? And is there really, what confidence do we have that it's actually going to happen this summer? I mean, I feel like if we don't have an engineer onboard actually working on this by February 1st, it's not going to happen this summer. I just think we run out of time. We have a little over 100 days until the end, working days, till the end of the school year. And that may be a lot to pull all this together. As Pete said, it's got to go out, there's an RFP. So totally support the project, glad the board has voted the way they have, but I'm just a little unsure about if this has to happen this summer. I know we want to have it happen as soon as we can, but we just need to know what we're going to do, and if it has to be this summer, then I think there's some work that we have to do. There's some lease work we have to do, you know, with Kids' Corner, some language we actually have not had in the lease. What's good about this whole conversation is it's prompted us to actually have a conversation with Kids' Corner so that we can kick out a tenant for a while if we have to, and, you know, bring them back in. But the bigger issue is, I think folks will be looking to the district, where can you put us? And for that, I'm looking at Mr. Marin and Dr. Hackett. So I just feel like time's getting short, that's all. Totally support the project, and I just want to remind, I think Pete knows this, you know, as part of our regular annual capital update, Frank and I make a point of reminding the School Committee what DPW's priorities are, and we were actually talking about this very project in July. Mr. Nixon, do you want me to comment on, I heard you say my name, so?
It's just a question I had.
A general question?
Right. Okay.
Thanks.
I was hoping Nick had it figured out because he mentioned he had been talking...
Quick clarifying...
I thought I was going to give the answer.
I have a quick clarifying question for you, Mr. Nixon. As our, consistently our Building and Capital Resource School Committee member, we've done boiler project and electrical project at Morocco, is this anywhere near analogous to the scope of the work, the amount of work that would need to be done? And if so, what was the cost of that work, if you remember, and how long did it take to try to give us an idea of how that might go at Mystic?
So I want to answer in 10 seconds and ask Pete to expand on it. I would say it's only analogous because we're talking about heat, but at Morocco, we had three high-efficiency modular, three high-efficiency modular gas-fired boilers, you know, that we...
We got issues.
We replaced some failing boilers, you know, we replaced three boilers with three new boilers. Every building's different. And we actually had to do some redesign work on the electrical scope at Morocco due to some of the supply chain impact with COVID, and our engineers actually went in and changed the scope a little bit so we could get some of the equipment that we needed in time to do the project. So I would just say only analogous in that, you know, power is power and heat is heat, but I defer to Pete.
So I appreciate that because Morocco was actually a steam plant with univentilators mounted in the ceiling with asbestos insulation. 2010, we actually replaced that over the course of one summer. That was abatement. We put in the high-efficiency full condensing boilers and, you know, a very modern system in there. It has the high filtration, the MERV 13s, it's a very modern system. We did that over the course of one summer. Of course, there always is, you know, what has to get done in the summer, and then those last cushion weeks of the shoulder season to tweak, do control work, things like that. So it is very similar. The one thing that I will say is that Chris is right about the supply chain issue with electrical parts, so that's all the more reason to get going on the engineering right now, develop a plan for it so that we can see what it will take. I do think that every day we run a risk there of a catastrophic failure, so I'm good at pulling out miracles, just have done it many times, so not to pat myself on the back. Could I? I don't know. It's just one of those things. But as far as relocation of people that we normally would have done at Morocco for the summer, that was a much smaller group of programs. But, I mean, we have already started some discussion about what that might look like, but, you know, not with any more than cursory talk with some of the school admin about that, but I don't know if that helps with that, but...
Yeah, I just echo Mr. Nixon's concerns about making sure the families are accommodated. I certainly 100% appreciate Nick's flexibility in saying that he can move programs, but I, you know, just like many other things we've talked about here tonight, there's parents as part of that equation as well. So I have concerns about being able to relocate families and kids in June when it's almost February. So I certainly, I have been over there with you, and I see the need for work, and the need for work is absolutely extensive. It is not just pulling a boiler out of that basement, it is fitting a boiler, not fitting a boiler up steps out of that basement and replacing the entire piping system in the building and replacing an entire electrical system in the building. And I can't imagine in terms of student or family safety, phasing that in in a way that I would feel good about having families do. So I see Summer '25 as a far more realistic timeline. I guess, Mr. Lawson, what I'd ask for you, from you, since you've brought this to us over the last several years, and we've always been concerned about when the system would fail, what can we do to support that building if we can't do it until Summer '25? We're being creative about how to move around if we can get to the Summer of '24. If we can't get to the Summer of '24, what can we do to get people through comfortably for another year?
I can't say that right now. I mean, we just continue to put resources into trying to fix things as they go. There's no ability to, say, strip off all of the insulation, look for leaks, you'll probably have more problems than you did. Then your steam system would require insulation to go back on. You know, a lot of what is happening is the threads of the pipes are deteriorated inside of themselves, so you, there's no inspection you can do to really see where these are going to occur. We have poor exchange of air. You know, what can we do right now? We're working on some temporary measures where things, where problems occur, but there's no real thought about where the next shoe is going to drop in the building and what that's going to involve, so.
Okay, thank you.
Couple more men and a half million more of them operating, that'll do good.
Other committee questions? I do just have one more thing to kind of follow up with some of the concerns, and I do appreciate the thought of the concerns of our families that we serve, both Kids' Corner and the REC. And I will say, if we are going to, if this was to move forward and we had some minor inconveniences about location for the summer, and we're talking about, there's several buildings close by that we've talked about possibly relocating that kids possibly could still walk or ride their bike home from, something like McCall Middle School or Lincoln, if that was, could end up being an option. We're looking for is a collaboration with the School Department to figure out what works best if we had to move forward. I think that in putting parents in kind of a minor situation where maybe it's their minorly inconvenience and still have the opportunity to program, far outweighs if we try to stretch this out into the winter and next year we get to a place where it's not fixable, where Pete can't pull out a miracle, and we're telling 250 parents, 350 parents, we don't have anywhere to put you. We don't know what we're going to do with you. I think that's more of a bigger concern than the minor inconvenience that we might have to do to notify people that, yes, you registered for some of these programs, we planned on having them at these places, but we're going to run the same high-quality programs, it could be in a different location. And I think that's the point I'd like to make about that.
So I had a few comments as well. You know, I hear that this balancing act, which is very difficult for us to do between the logistical challenges that the other members had raised and the potential of catastrophic failure, to Mr. Nixon's point, that, you know, is this something we must do now because we're right at that brink? And that's a difficult one, you know, for me anyway, to balance, because it seems like there's a lot of logistics. I would say you could have a more orderly transition, more space available, et cetera, if we can wait, but we don't know if we can wait. I, then jumping around a little bit here, I think I read and heard that the replacement solution is a heat pump? Is that right?
Yes.
Yes. So I'm very happy to hear that we're continuing to electrify and move away from fossil fuels and perhaps with the old system, I think when we were there, you said as a backup, but I'm very, just as a comment, very happy that we continue to move in that direction. I do recall on the walk-through seeing some, maybe to be kind, historic electrical panels and other features of the building, and I noted in the materials we received that the construction estimate doesn't include the electrical upgrades. And I'm wondering if when we get in there to replace the heating system, you know, besides supplying the heat pump electric, if we're going to find other systems that, sort of scope creep of question, that ought to be, if we're replacing all the steam pipes and stuff, should we be also upgrading that very ancient-looking pluggy panel thing?
So the likelihood of being able to keep the old steam system as a redundant, that's not really likely, but we will investigate it as we investigate a lot of things during the, you know, the next phase of the engineering. We will not, we may need some extensive abatement work that we have factored into the number that we're using to get rid of the pipes. More than likely that the heat pump itself, you know, would be an easier run of things, so it seems like it would be easier than putting back a hydraulic system, putting it back in the boiler room. A lot of the work will be done in the attic space and dropped through. The amount of electricity throughout the building and the age is a condition issue. I don't know if they, where they're going to at this point locate, say, the actual units, what they'll need for power throughout distribution, will they be able to just take something out in the main, or they have to bring up the distribution panels? It is definitely one of the unknowns in it, but there is some factor of that in there, but, you know, that's why we need to do the engineering to move ahead with that. The RFP, as I said, is available on tomorrow. We have a timeline of the following, two weeks from that, on that Thursday, there to be delivered. We're going to the beginning of the following week do the exercise of selecting a vendor. We are working with Ken Pruitt and the Energy Committee on this whole project. There is the potential for some significant grants that we'll be working on, Green Communities. So it's been pretty, a lot of flushing out, but there again, we don't know until, everything until we get to that next phase of engineering. We plan to have a deadline of May 1st for the package that comes back, so if that helps that, that's hopefully by the time we would know if we could get into a summer project. And in that engineering, we are going to be looking at the potential for phased, whether it's phased work in coordination with the asbestos removal, or if it's phased with occupancy, it'll be looked at. I am a firm believer in get everybody out, do the job, that's what I'll be pushing for. But we aren't just going to look at all these things to come back. And again, like you said, if, we've got a lot of winter left to go, and so I'll know better how much I can tell you it's a disaster or not, but, I mean, the way, it's like we dropped off a cliff, as I said before this year, experience in the leaks, having to react to asbestos pipes. I appreciate where everybody's at with it, and I don't want to rush into anything, but, you know, the condition of the building is what it is, and the electrical component, we will know soon what that looks like.
So that is or isn't part of the study?
It's part of the study.
The electrical is part of the engineering study?
The engineering study we're entering into right now, yes. So what's in that for is all ancillary systems to run have to be looked at at the same time. If it's new HVAC work, there's fire alarm coordination, you know, duct smokes, things like that to be added. There's, you know, control work that has to be done. Everything that's part of it is written into that scope for the engineering services that are coming up next.
Well, I have a kid in that building, so, who's on the hot wing of the building, so he's been doing all right, but he, we all obviously want to, you know, keep the kids and the teachers and the administrators happy and comfortable in there. And it sounds like we'll have a whole lot more information in a few months, both the real life, what happens in the rest of the winter, as well as when we get the study back to have a better sense of scope and cost and things like that. One other question, which I think was for John, just because I don't recall, did you say some of the funding that the Select Board approved was ARPA funding for this? And if so, did that have a, does that affect our timeline on this? Is that, are we able to spend that in '25, or does it have to be spent? Does the work have to happen this year?
It has to be committed by, the work has to be committed, you have to be on a agreement by November 30th of this year.
So if we, so if it had to get pushed to next year for some reason, as long as we have a contract with the person who's going to do it, or the company that's going to do it, we'd be okay?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I don't know what the likelihood of that is, but yes.
Yeah, thank you.
To clarify that, so my understanding from the town manager's remarks at the Select Board hearing is, so you have to commit the funds by end of November, early December '24. That doesn't mean do the work, that just means have a contract. And then I also understand, John, the work, you actually, the job has to be done by December 26th? Is that right?
Yes.
There is some point at which it has to.
Right, absolutely. But this will get done well before that.
Yeah, so my impression was if the board were to further encumber more ARPA monies to go towards the actual work, it could do so for both scenarios, Summer '24 or Summer '25. It doesn't threaten, you know, the ARPA money and the board, the board has even talked further about, you know, there's a risk. You can commit ARPA funds, but if the project comes in under budget, you lose it, it's gone. And I appreciate how the board has sort of talked kind of deliberately about maybe consciously, you know, dedicating less ARPA than you think you need because at least you're not going to lose that, and then you go somewhere else for the supplemental funding, and who knows, you know, there could be free cash or something else. So just some really good and thoughtful conversation about, you know, how to pay for it.
Ms. Bollnessy, did you have a question?
Oh, I appreciated Pete's comments about the timeline because I actually, I was trying to figure out the timeline for the engineering study, and then also with the June and July timeframe that John was talking about. So it sounds like once the information on the engineering and electrical study comes back, hopefully by May 1st, then the thought is, what you were saying, John, that hopefully the work could be done in June and July?
Right, so based on what comes back in engineering, you know, we can turn that around into an RFP fairly quickly, and Pete, what's that, 30 days to get responses on RFP?
Two weeks.
Again, you know, we wouldn't be here if this was just a boiler issue, because the boiler issue's pretty simple. You can just bring in a substitute boiler, you pipe it in, it's no issue, but when the piping's bad, then that's, that is a much more complex fix, and especially in a building that old. So it was really the issue of can we plan better not? better now in an emergency situation? And that's, and so that's why we're asking for the authorization this evening.
I'm not hearing anyone, Mr. Hopcraft, disagree that an engineering study should go forward. I think the only debate I'm hearing at this table is what a realistic timeline for getting the work done is. And I think some of that might be determined only after we get the engineering study back and see what the scope of the work is, what, Select Board may not even be able to secure the amount of funding that this project comes in at. We have no guarantee of that either. So it may even take till summer of '25 for that to happen. So I don't, I don't know if you're looking for consensus, Mr. Hopcraft, unless anybody disagrees. But I don't think anybody can disagree that we need to define the scope of the work on this project and find out how much it's going to cost, what the scope is, and then determine the best timeline for everyone involved for getting that work done to make sure that we really provide a good environment for kids and families, both while they're in the building and while they're out of the building.
I think it would be good to get consensus on, at least that point. Do people feel comfortable with the study and, you know, getting more information for future?
Yes. I think that, you know, we need to try to do as much as we can do. I appreciate what Pete and Nick are saying. Like if this fails next winter catastrophically and we're scrambling to try and put kids in different places, that's the worst-case scenario. So if we can get it done this summer, I think we should try to get it done this summer. It might not be possible to get it done this summer, but let's make, let's make every effort to get it done this summer because, again, we don't want to be in next winter with no heat in the building and we can't use the building for months on end. I think that's the worst-case scenario, and any other scenario is better than that. So as much as we can do to do it this summer, let's go for it. And we may get to a point where everyone says, no, we can't do it this summer. But I think we have to make every effort to get it done this summer.
I was going to say, so I think, maybe I can amend the consensus and say, you know, I think that members of the committee, or my question is whether we have consensus that we would like to move as quickly as possible, but we'd like to gather the information and just have a moment to hear the engineering report results, not necessarily delay anything. But, because my preference would be, I'd love to have that thing done now, you know, like, but there's just a lot of logistics. And to Ms. Bergstrom's point, if it ends up being $3 million or whatever to do the work, or we get in there and we find out that, you know, something else is rotted in the building and needs to be dealt with now. Yeah, I wonder if, I've modeled my consensus here, but do we have consensus first just on the engineering study? Can we just start?
Just a point of clarification. So I believe, because we are in possession of the building, right, and we hold a contract with Kids' Corner, when REC uses the building for programming. I'm just curious about, we are not being asked, you are not, as a school committee, being asked to fund anything. You're not being asked to approve the engineering study, right, or the work that has to be done. I think of interest to you, and certainly to me, is if, in fact, the work works, could be scheduled for the summer, what would the impact of that be and how we accommodate the program that we have, we care about you too, of course, but how do we accommodate the programs that are there for the period of the summer? Because I think, and I don't know what you need for action tonight, certainly is consensus on getting it done, but I just want to be clear about what you really want to see come back here. Are you expecting to see the engineering report and what the costs are? Or are you expecting to see a schedule that would kind of give you a sense of what kind of planning would be required to make it happen on our end?
I think, for me, it would be the latter. I can't speak for all the members of the committee.
Mr. Nixon, you're at Capital, so it's a different question for you with that hat on, but.
I was, I would actually say, both are helpful only for this reason. It is a school building, and as we know at Town Meeting, you know, Town Meeting wants to know what the school committee thinks. I like the idea of sort of underfunding through ARPA. So regardless of which summer it is, if there's some supplemental funding that's necessary, I mean, I personally, I'll go on the record, I support that approach. I'm glad the board has used ARPA for this study. I think it's a good and reasonable expense of ARPA funds to get the job done. I mean, if you don't use ARPA, where else are you going to go? It's one of the few levers the board can pull that's not tied to our, you know, our calendar, right, in Winchester, which is all predicated on Town Meeting. Personally, I support some supplemental funding to, you know, to get it done, but I would like to understand what it's going to cost. Is it a $3 million? Is it 1.5? Is it a $4 million project? Because if we're talking those kind of numbers, then the question will be, where is that other money coming from? And at what expense? And then we can have a conversation about, as the former superintendent said, need-to-haves and like-to-haves and need-to-haves. So there's some things we need to do at Mystic, but no doubt about it.
Just to clarify, if there's additional funding needed, it's not coming out of the school department, right?
Nope.
So, right. And I know, it was funnier than I thought it was going to be. Actually, I wasn't even trying to be funny. But I mean, in terms of the school committee's interests, I think I hear what you're saying is that you're going to be asked what your opinion is, this could end up at fall Town Meeting, and you want to be able to support it, spring Town Meeting, and you want to support it. Is that fair? Because you're never going to be voting on funding for this as a school committee.
That's fair. Just remember, the other element too is, so our tenant, Kids' Corner, they have their own operational model. They have their own cash flow. They pay a monthly, we're in the process of negotiating a new lease with them. Our lease doesn't cover what, you know, if they go to some other space, they'd be paying us like the rental rate for buildings, presumably. I haven't done that analysis. So, you know, does that hurt Kids' Corner? Does Kids' Corner come back and say, hey, you know, there's a cost consequence here. We need some help? I don't know. And I don't know how to have that conversation, and I don't know where that comes from.
Yep.
You know, or does that have an impact on our longer-term sort of lease negotiations with them? So that's the other thing, just in the background for everybody to understand, is we're overdue in executing a lease with Kids' Corner. So it's a big deal if we're going to say you need to get out of the building. And a part of that is, what's our obligation to put you up someplace else? And what's that going to cost? We've got to figure that out.
So when we come back, so when we come back with some information on the scope of work there, Nick will have a flushed-out contingency plan to review with you if the work is to go forward this summer or the following summer.
I think, Mr. Fallon, though, I hear Mr. Nixon saying is it's not just Nick. Our tenant is Nick, our tenant is Kids' Corner.
I agree. It concerns with the tenant. Yes, absolutely.
But I would just go back also along that point. Nick did, and I'm not asking to say anything now, but you have been talking to Kids' Corner, so you have a collective interest in trying to figure this out. So we'll follow up with you, with Andrew, and just kind of hear what some of those ideas are because we've not talked to Kids' Corner about this. But it's good that you have to start that discussion. So, because I think we could bring some scenarios back to the committee prior to us hearing about what the engineering study says and what the impact might be.
Okay.
Yeah, that would help timewise. Well, any other committee remarks? Thank you. We hope all goes smoothly and, you know, the logistics work out and we get this thing done before it blows up. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Lincoln Chiller, so from one HX system to another.
So, trying to figure out where to start this. So the Lincoln Chiller project has been part of the, some of the discussion that's been happening, and Mr. Nixon and Mr. Lawson have a better handle on the timeframe as to when this started to come up with Capital. There was a study done, and there were options outlined. You do have that in your packet. I think for tonight's purposes, I think you asking questions about the study, about the options, it may be starting with, you know, Mr. Nixon's been intimately involved with us through Capital, and maybe just one of you, Pete, and maybe Pete starts, and Mr. Nixon, just kind of describe what the options are and, you know, what, maybe a little bit of pros and cons with them, and whether or not there's any cost implications, just to give the committee kind of a high-level overview of the discussion I think in the end, committee needs to weigh in on the best option that meets the needs of the school department and deals with the issue.
So I'm happy to just start right off. The Lincoln School was renovated, opened in 2002. The majority of the classrooms are air-conditioned. It's the only fully air-conditioned elementary school at this time that was decided on for, you know, use for summers. The system is past age now of BOMA standards. Those are regular standards for equipment. It's a very large unit, and it's based in the basement of the building. And then the other component, the chiller itself is in a bunker area in the basement of the building. And the rooftop condensers, you know, are on top of the roof. It's a big freon system. It's at the point of quarter-capacity right now, and it's limping along. Several years, a few years back now, we put some serious money into gaining time with it where we're at now. But we only have one compressor out of four on the big unit that's working that, as I said, provides cooling to all the classrooms. We did a study for replacement of it. You wouldn't want to put a chiller in the building anymore for several reasons. Right now, the one that's in there is, it's full of freon. So if you ever had a catastrophic event, you have that freon in there. The actual freon being used in the old system is no longer put into service, and it's getting very, very expensive, very expensive to maintenance it. So, long story short, we put the money in to gain some time. School committee helped by putting it as a priority a couple of years back to investigate. We have come back with a schematic design. We reviewed some options of it. There are two, two options which each have a A and B to them. One is to put the new unit on the roof. The other is to put the unit on the ground. And then the subset of that is to go with basic air conditioning package or to utilize, you know, the opportunity to do a heat pump system. And rather than just switch over to cooling, we could actually tie the system, because it's dual water temperatures set through the building, either the water goes to the boilers or it goes through the chiller. We could tie the bulk of the heating system to this heat pump and have a good portion of electrification. And it's definitely one where we could have a redundancy in the system by keeping the boilers because they're in good shape. But this would be the opportunity to do it. Working with the Sustainability Director, he feels confident that there's enough grant money to almost offset the choice between one for the other for the heat pump versus the AC. So, location-wise, I'm for the heat pump. I know that's what we're driving through in the town. I do like the fact that we have a redundant system. The location that I prefer and really want to drive through is the ground mount. I'm very, I'm very concerned about the aesthetics and the historic of the building, but right now, there's at least partial of the components of the one there on the roof. We have to access the roof through a boys' room, close down the bathroom. We have to go out there and maintenance it, you know, go out through a window. I had somebody hurt going through the window. We've had to do a bunch of things. As far as what work will have to be done to do the structural supporting, that really hasn't been flushed out to keep it on the roof. I'm sure that that would be significant, and it would also involve a lot more piping run through the building. So I would be concerned about the ability to do it in a summer and have everything back together, just until we may got further along in the design. The pad mount one would be located as if, if you're aware, you know, familiar with the design for the pedestrian flat work around there. It's in the niche that would have, that is marked out as a potential for an outdoor classroom. But there isn't one there now. I am concerned for the kids. But I think eliminating that from being on the roof for many reasons is a good idea between having to have workmen traverse the building, go through the boys' room, ability for us to maintain it a lot easier. And noise-wise, I know there's concern for that. They do make sound deadening packages for them. If we were to put it up on the roof, that doesn't, sound problem doesn't go away, similar to the high school and dealing with the neighbors where you have that hilled area, you're going to be projecting sound. So those are the options. It's limping along. I don't think that if we had another major fail of the compressor, we'd really be able to get it back up and running. It is a building with operable windows, but that's little comfort to the people that are in there expecting, you know, the air conditioning or required through an IEP for your summer programs that are geared around having that. But that's what it is. So we have that designed, ready to go for funding for final design and final cost estimation and construction.
Any questions or comments?
Recommendations from our Capital representative as well?
Or recommendations from our Capital representative?
I was just trying to hear Michelle. So, just to give a little more background. So the report that you see that was funded was $60,000, funded by Town Meeting about two and a half years ago. Pete had actually requested this two or three years. It just didn't quite sort of get high enough on the list. School committee got behind it, so we got that funding. So you're looking at the $60,000 spend. At this last Fall Town Meeting, under Article 5 and Motion 6, Town Meeting voted to appropriate $150,000 in the Building Stabilization Fund for the Lincoln School Chiller Engineering. So Fall Town Meeting has said yes to a further appropriation to actually do the engineering work for one of these options. And Pete, I'm sort of putting you on the spot. There were different options in that report, I think three on the roof, two on the ground. The heat pump option is option B, right? So like, I think one B is on the roof, two B is on the ground, but they're both heat pumps. Based on the report that we got, heat pump on the roof is $1.14 million. But on the ground, it's $983,000. However, you know, all we really know about this is this very high-level report. I actually think we got a decent amount for $60,000. It's not schematic design. We knew that, actually. What we're now trying to do is more sort of schematic design and design development, and to pick a direction. So the observations I would make, Pete was kind enough to actually go out with me on the roof at Lincoln in December. That was fun. It is interesting to get out on the roof, to say the least. I want to make several observations. So we're talking about a large piece of equipment. It's about the size of a 24-foot box truck, so 25, 26-ish feet. It's eight feet wide. It has a height to it. It needs its own structure. Even if it goes on the ground, there is excavation, there's foundation. I mean, wherever it goes, it needs a foundation. Many years ago, before I moved to Winchester, so probably '97, '98, there were committees that talked about what we were going to do at Lincoln Elementary School. This town, prior EFPBC school committees, you know, could have made a decision to put building system equipment on the ground, but chose not to. That generally speaking is the cheaper way to go. Pete is 100% right that if it goes on the ground where it's suggested makes sense because that's the shortest piping run, which is not only maybe cheaper from a first-cost point of view, and arguably there's a maintenance issue as well. I would just encourage the committee maybe to reframe it a little bit, like what are our priorities? So we have very little in the way of site for kids to run around at Lincoln. The outdoor classroom, Pete mentioned, that was simply just an opportunity when we were doing the site work and flat work design. We recognized the way the walkway curves. We could build a little patio there, put in some like stone benches, and it's literally, it's a place for teachers to be out there with their kids. And that was something that the building-based team said that they would really appreciate. But to Pete's point, we don't have it there today. So we're not losing that if we put equipment there. But we have some, we have some very large equipment. It's right up against the building. Because we made investments in the structure, and we have like steel dunage up there today. So we have like a steel frame on the roof that holds equipment we have today. And if you've seen the report that Pete sent us, the dimensions of the equipment that's proposed don't necessarily correspond to the dunage that we have up there. So that would have to be, first of all, modified. And then the next question is, you have to do like some deadload calculations. Does it work? I think those are actually good questions that we should be asking. My preference is to put equipment on the roof for a couple of reasons. We've already made an investment so that equipment can be up there. It's up there today, but not exactly the equipment that's in this report. And I think it's in our interest to keep the stuff off the ground because we're just further encumbering a very, very tight site with little feet. further encumbering a very, very tight site with little feet running around. And if, I would, my last comment would just be, so in addition to just the size of the equipment, you have to have a certain amount of space around it for maintenance. I would not just expect, I would insist that there would have to be some sort of screen, you know, around it that would be appropriate for the building. So there's a cost for that as well. If the committee felt that it was really important or was leaning towards doing this on the ground, I would actually suggest we could actually reach out to the Historical Commission just for an informal, you know, consult. They don't necessarily have standing. It's our building. It's a historic building, but they've done this in the past. They've engaged maybe with you, Pete, and town management when they were putting in the generator at Town Hall. So sometimes, you know, we have equipment that has to go on the ground. And I believe the Historical Commission got involved in there as well, just to take a look and kind of render an opinion. So anyway, you know, those are my thoughts. I would prefer to see it on the roof. I know Pete's not surprised to hear me say that. The last thing I would just say, and Pete's been pretty consistent, the good, unlike Mystic, this has nothing to do with heat. So, right? We have no problem heating the building. This is really just, it's about air conditioning. And this is another example of something that Pete has been kind of waving a yellow flag on for a while. I'd like to see us make progress on this. It took frankly too long just to get the $60,000 to get us the study. But nothing's lost because this is just a conceptual study. It has recommendations. But we really kind of need to make some decision about what direction we want to go so we can start spending that $150,000 and getting some more information, whether we want to do this on the ground or on the roof.
Great. I definitely have some thoughts, but other committee members? I will jump in with some of my thoughts then. Yeah, so I appreciate the report and I read through it and I share your desire to have it on the roof. I think, you know, all things being equal, I would rather prioritize the space for the kids and the aesthetic and whatnot and all your points about it being up there already. When I look at the options that we have, the range is about $900,000 to 1.1 million and about $100,000 of that according to preliminary numbers are, is whether it's on the ground or on the roof. And the other $100,000 is whether we do a heat pump or not. I heard Mr. Lawson say and Mr. Pruitt say that they thought they could, you know, get incentives that, from Mass Save that would make up just about all of the cost of the heat pump option. So that's, that's the other point that I would make is I'd strongly favor the heat pump option because it's cost neutral and because while we're talking about cooling, it can also in, you know, light temperature provide heat. And either way, it takes, you know, it reduces our emissions and it reduces the amount of fossil fuels we need. So, you know, I think in my mind, it's a no-brainer wherever it goes that it'd be a heat pump. But my preference would be if we can make it work, to certainly explore the roof options. I know there was an option in here that looked like two smaller units that could fit on the existing dunage or perhaps one larger unit that you have to extend it. You know, those are all engineering, you know, questions that are beyond my scope. I wonder if, because I hear your concern about the, your team getting out there and getting injured and whatnot. I wonder, I haven't done the walk up there, so I don't know what it's like. I'm picturing going through this bathroom and crawling through a window and things, but could that window be enlarged to a door that's locked so that our boys don't go out there on the roof?
I'd certainly make sure that they looked at that if that's the option, that we're doing something that's more, you know, yeah, more accessible. I don't know how, but that would definitely be something that we would, we would ask to look into at the same time.
I would expect in the near term, it probably, hopefully wouldn't need a lot of maintenance, but down the road, people would probably be pretty darn happy that there was a door there to figure it out.
Yeah. There's actually considerable maintenance that we have to do. My only concern though is that, looking at the dunage, we really need to understand what the load is. Because we're taking now, the condenser fans are up there now for the existing unit that's in the basement. We're talking about taking the heavier component as a package with the fans on it and putting it up there. So, not just the, the structure needs to be looked at. It could be an issue.
Didn't we account for that when we did the roof, Mr. Nixon?
The engineering study would tell us too.
The weight, yeah. Did, did we not account? I thought we, the last time we did the roof at Lincoln, we accounted for heavier weight on the roof?
So the design at Lincoln, the dead load capacity of the roof and the dunage would have been designed for the equipment that's there, like Pete is saying. Building codes change over time, which Pete lives with every day. So, you know, sometimes the Massachusetts code will change. We have a new wind load, we have a new dead load or some criteria that impacts live load. So, I mean, Pete's making a very valid point. If the committee's preference is to do this on the roof, that's what it become, that kind of frames the exercise. And then the engineer can say, okay, this is the dunage we have on the roof. Does it work or not? Do we need to modify it? Do, do we need to do something, you know, just how the dunage actually connects to the structure of the building? You know, the dunage, think of it, it's just like a, it's a steel frame to hold something that needs to impart its load onto the actual structure below.
Right.
So, the dunage is, yeah, like a solar, yeah, that's a good point, sure. I mean, the, you know, the steel canopies at Lynch are going to hold the solar panels, but you've got to design the canopies sort of support the panels. So in this case, we have steel up there on the, it sits above the roof membrane. It's in good condition, I would say. Seems to be in good condition, but it was designed to hold equipment that's there today. But perhaps even, I don't know if we go back to HMFH, Pete, you know, engineers and architects, this is why they save their drawings and their calculations because this happens all the time. You have a client who says, hey, I'm looking to do XYZ. You go dig it out of the archive, engineers can pull up their calculations. By the way, we did exactly this at Vincent Owen about six years ago, Pete, I guess. We did the solar at VO. We went back to the original structural engineer. He looked back at his calculations to confirm what he had assumed in terms of where we could put solar panels at VO. So, I mean, the information is there. We just, it's got to be dug out.
Right.
And nobody should waste their time pulling that information out if the committee's preference is, you know, go on the ground. But, you know, my preference would be to do the roof.
So I just want to thank you, Mr. Lawson, because we have kept you here a very long time tonight. When you come to see us, we like to make it a party. So, we appreciate you being here and we certainly do appreciate everything that the DPW does to keep our buildings clean and safe and well-supported for our kids because that's important when they come in every day too. So, I just want to acknowledge, like, thank you. We're asking you a lot of questions here tonight and we really appreciate you being here and the work that you do every day. So, I just want to acknowledge that when you hear all the questions from the committee, like we have your undivided attention right now. So, we just appreciate being able to use the time to, to figure these things out that certainly not always in my wheelhouse is engineering and dunage and supporting things on the roof. And to echo Mr. Hopcroft, and you know you've heard it from me before, if we can go for the green option, if we can go for the option that's more energy efficient, I'm always supportive of that. So, I'd love, I'd love to know a little bit more just about that. Like what can the roof support? I don't know the difference in the dunage between a heat pump and the other options you might have too. So, and to Mr. Nixon's point, if we do have to put it on the ground, I'd love some information from the Historical Commission or somebody about making it aesthetically fit with our buildings. We've done a lot of things at Lincoln to try to keep that, the historic look to the building because we see it from all sides. So, and I don't know what that means. So, I'd like a little more information about both of those options personally.
And Mr. Chair can make one last comment. So, just like the Mystic School, I mean, at the end of the day, we should be focused on what is the end result and when and how do we get there? Short of John spending ARPA money at the Select Board table, everything goes through Town Meeting. So, this, this is the kind of project that we would typically do, actually do the work over the summer. So, it's January 23rd. All we have is a high-level, you know, 14-page report. So, this is not, unless somebody strongly disagrees, this is not a summer '24 project. But, but Town Meeting has allocated $150,000. I'm going to put you a little on the spot, Pete. It feels to me like being January, there's plenty of time to, to do some of this work, do this analysis, look at some of these roof-based questions, bring that information back. Because if this is something the committee and DPW want to see happen summer of '25, we would typically be asking for this money in the fall, right? And we have, if we're going to ask for the money, we have to know what we're going to do. We have to know what it's going to cost. We've got to make that case. And it's going to go through Capitol, right?
Hundred percent.
You know, Pete and I are going to have to argue really hard for this at Capitol and there's going to be a whole bunch of other priorities for Capitol.
Well, and just like when we put solar panels on the, the high school roof, Mr. Lawson, we put the rails up to keep you guys safe. So, we need to know if we're putting it on the roof, you know, to Mr. Hopcroft's point, what else we need to do to keep people safe to access it too.
Very appreciative. I'm only giving you information as you're quiet. I am happy to show you any building, do a walkthrough with any building. The more folks see them, the better I feel too. So, I appreciate you calling me here and I'm happy to come anytime you want to talk to me about your buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to say, I think I misspoke on one item when I talked about the two smaller units. I looked it up and that was a chiller only, not the heat pump. So, I'd be in favor of the heat pump. And I think, Mr. Nixon, you clarified another question I had in my mind around timing because if we took this building offline in '24, then we couldn't move the wind wreck into it if it was offline. But it sounds like those are sequenced differently, so.
Well, I think, I think some space in the building, you wouldn't lose access to all the building spaces, but it's not the kind of project you would want to be doing in a fully occupied building during the school year. Is that fair, Pete?
So, just to plug back for the ground mount option, if you're putting it on the roof, you're going to have to be doing a lot of piping from the basement right through the building up to the roof and back down. That'll be intrusive to the building. If you, if we do do the pad mount, the plan is that where we're located, we could somewhat come underneath that entryway on the main street side and hit the main mechanical room where the old chiller is. So it would be much less intrusive a project for, for the building. So, that was another, you know, plus on that side.
Thank you. And Mr. Nixon, I was just thinking that if, if it's hot in summertime and there's no air conditioning, because I heard we only had one fan going, if we take the AC offline, the building's usable, but it's not comfortable.
Yeah. And remember, this, this, this project could impact the Lincoln site work and flat work, which the board has discussed a couple of times. This project is on Beth's list. That project is nearly shovel-ready. This little corner, we've talked about the idea of the outdoor classroom, is not a lot of money. I'm not even sure it's six figures, but it would be pretty foolish of us to, you know, go forward on that and then, and then not, not buy that scope, right? I mean, you bid a job, you never get a dollar back. For every dollar, you get like a nickel back. So, it's just important, I think, for us to understand what our approach is on the mechanical here so, so that if we need to make a change in the site work and flat work, you know, we need to do that. Just need to be coordinated, that's all.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any other questions regarding the chiller? I appreciate the fact that we've kept Nixon cool in here. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Lawson, for all of your help. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in with us, Mr. Powell.
Thank you. We're not done yet. All right, so.
We're done with you.
We are done with you though.
Not, you know, not, I didn't mean it the way it sounded.
For now. Anticipated agenda items for our next meeting. The next meeting is our special meeting to consider the FY '25 budget. Anticipated future agenda items following that are the 2024-25 school year calendar, the 2425 school day, the addition of 10 minutes, some security updates and elementary literacy. Future meeting dates are January 30th for the special meeting regarding the FY '25 budget vote, February 13th and February 29th. And we have, any further discussion?
We also have an item for budget discussion.
Oh my gosh, we have everybody. Thank you. We still have a lot of work to do tonight. All right, back to the FY '25 budget.
Just, you know, just as a suggestion and obviously what is worth, we can also, if people have questions they want to ask us offline, they want to email to us, we can do some of that too. So, if that's of interest or we run out of time or steam this evening, just to say that, you know, we also have a finance subcommittee meeting on Thursday where this budget is going to be discussed again. So it'd be great to get your questions if we don't get them tonight or comments or recommendations or requests, that if we could have them prior to Thursday, that would really tie up well, so.
And just to make a clarification, Dr. Hackett, there was, I heard a couple times this evening from community members that our budget isn't transparent, it's not online. And I'd just like to remind folks, if they're still hanging in with us out there somewhere in wing cam land, that once our budgets are voted by Town Meeting and approved, those budgets for the last two years are available online in full detail. So, I understand people's frustration with this budget not being available yet, but this budget isn't a budget yet. So, it is a proposed draft budget and once those budgets are available, we are fully transparent about them.
And if you go back to, sorry.
Right into. Did I give you a leading, Karen?
And if you go back onto our, onto the Winchester Public Schools website, under the Finance and Business Operations Department link, the budgets for FY '23 and FY '24 are both uploaded to the website. And they are down to the detail. And so you can see that. And even though you cannot see the FY '25 budget, which is coming up, which we are working on right now, you can see what we have worked on and what our department has worked on over the last two years down to the line item detail.
And you can also find that if you go to the school committee page, it says school budget and it'll take you right there. You don't even have to think for finance and operations. So, I just wanted to mention that.
No, I appreciate the clarification. Just a couple more points. We actually will post this budget online after you vote.
After we vote it.
Right, so it'll be online, available for anyone. Anyone can request any information at any time from my office. Finance subcommittee has met multiple times. You know, some of the questions tonight.
In public meetings.
In public meetings. All great questions. Some of the requests about information tonight were very specific to something that we would need to put together. So, we would not, as I tried to explain, ordinarily come in here and talk to you about all the money we're spending to staff on social studies or any particular program unless you ask for it, right? So, if there are those kinds of requests either from you or from the public and whatever you want to do with those, and I know you, you got feedback tonight, you know, we can do that. I think on the topic of literacy, it's already been said that we're going to be putting this on, you're going to be putting this on the February 13th agenda. And I think I was, I hope I was clear that our intent is to come to you after we've done more work around it with, both with the Chair and Vice Chair and also with Jen and others, Lori in our office, to come back and present to you a plan to plan, a full plan. And I will just say, one of the components of that will be that we are looking to engage with a, with a outside third party, preferably a university or college with a research division so that we can have, you know, I think what we heard tonight in part, for whatever reason, right? But to have an objective opportunity for, and confidential opportunity for people to give feedback and to questions that are designed by a group that we pull together, for lack of a better term, a design team that would meet and work directly to start with the actual outside party and really brainstorm out what are the kinds of things we want to know, what kind of questions do we want to ask. But more importantly, to have the tools, surveys, focus groups put together by people who do this for a living so that we're not doing a survey monkey and thinking that that's necessarily going to be valid and reliable information.
Right.
So that's the intent. I, I would obviously not look to have a conversation about it tonight, but I just want to be clear about, one, if there are specific requests about information about the budget, those can be asked anytime. We would just need some turnaround time to produce those. And the purposes of tonight, as you know, because you have been through this, was not to delve into any particular program, you know, but you, at your request, we started to look at fees, for example. And we can go deeper into whatever it is that you'd like to go deeper into.
And I was going to say, and also to be clear, Dr. Hackett, there's no line item that anybody's going to see that says literacy in our budget. Because that's not the way Munis works, that manages our budget. It's not. If people want, are curious about how much we spend on literacy, first we have to define what that means.
Right, right. From general ed staff to special education staff to all of it, right?
And I just wanted to.
And K2 literacy, K5 literacy, K8 literacy.
And I appreciate the, I think the question was, was really about buying. And I appreciate, I think the question was really about buying a program or a curriculum, right? So, I think that that was the question. I hope I was clear that this budget does not contain a dollar figure to do that, because we need to go through a process to really understand what we do, really understand what the questions are. And wherever that first step leads would be to the next step. So, that would be my recommendation.
Thanks, I just wanted to, I just wanted to try to take an opportunity to explain a little bit more about how things look in our budget and how, where our transparency is, and help people be able to find that a little better, too. So, they're not so frustrated.
And I just wanted to make one point on this about, you know, I think I've mentioned it in the hallway, about assuming positive intent. Well, the information is, you know, it's technically available. You know, and, you know, think about what the problem is that you're trying to solve, and think about what it is that you need. You're asking Dr. Hackett and the district to go through and pull and slice a lot of data in a lot of different ways, you know. You know, if your issue is moving, is working the literacy issue, which I think is an important one, there's a process we're going to be doing, and people should engage in that process. You know, if your issue is, I want to see, you know, how these numbers work, you know, they work very similar to how they worked last year. But just, you know, to be thoughtful and make sure that we're not pulling resources away from the kids, you know, just in the interest of, you know, getting perfect transparency of everything, because they, you know, they could use up a whole lot of resources, so.
And not to get into it, but you can imagine that there are other views about the information and the presentation of the information that was contained in the Globe article. And I heard that concern from some parents that I met with in terms of how they felt Winchester as a school system, as a community, was represented, regardless of outside of literacy. And I understand the topic, and I understand the issue. So, I don't, I'm not looking to, you know, we're not looking to debate that. We want to know what we're doing. We want to, we want to open the discussion in a safe way that people can participate in, because that was loud and clear to me from parents that I met with. They want to have a voice. Our teachers need to have a voice, and we need to bring people together on this without a predetermined outcome before the conversation, right? So, that may lead to another step of, well, let's do this, or let's do that, or let's explore, or whatever. But there's a lot of misunderstanding, and we take, I have to take responsibility for some of that in terms of what is it that we do? And, you know, that, I think that needs to be part of this process, too, is communicating that and having discussions around it. So, just for what it's worth.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I think that's part of what people are looking for from the budget. So, I think even retrospectively, if we can explain, you know, what have we spent on professional development? What have we spent on curriculum? What have we been purchasing recently? Because I think there have been things that we have purchased, and I, I'm not sure if there's some confusion around whether teachers are purchasing the materials themselves or they're using materials that have been purchased by the district. So, I think as much as we can clarify that, I think that will be helpful, because I think that's what people are looking for. You know, I give the example, my child's teacher uses the U Fly curriculum, so it'd be good to know, like, was that purchased for Morocco? Or was that just something that the teachers at Morocco bought themselves? Because, you know, it's something that people like, and we're hearing positive things about. I'm impressed with it. So, if that's something that we, as a district, bought, we need to communicate that, because otherwise, the story is confused. And if it wasn't something that we bought, then we need to think about that as well. So, I think that's what people are looking for.
It's a great question, and understand that perspective, because I would have assumed that everyone would know that we would buy those things for teachers, and we would be expecting teachers to do that. So, I think that what we can do as part of February 13th is get you that information, so that you have that, and then kind of talk about what we think a good process would look like, and how, and kind of lay that out for you. So, that's a great suggestion. I, you know, the more we can kind of clarify those misconceptions, because there are questions that kind of came up tonight, and assumptions that came up, I never would have expected that people had. So, that was helpful for me to understand, you know, what is it that we're, you know, that you're looking for and confused about, or have questions on.
And to the, the budgets reflect our values also. Our, this committee has a history of creating district goals that are drawn from our educational staff, our community. For quite a few years that I was on this committee, we heard from our community that social emotional support was a desperate need of our kids, that mental health was really impacting their ability to learn in our schools, and our budget reflected that value. So, I would also challenge some of the misconceptions that this committee and past committees have not had aligned goals and budgets that reflect those goals. I see Ms. Bulmice wants to jump in.
Yes. You keep beating me to these comments. So, I was also just going to say, I agree that a budget is, reflects your community values and aspirations, your hopes and your goals. And I do believe that that is part of the process that this school committee and school committees in the past undertakes every year. And this, in previous years, when we have gone and spoken with parent associations, I think one of the opening part, one of the opening slides that we have talks about our goals as a district, and then leads into a discussion of the budget and how it matches up to those, to the school committee, to the school department and the school committee's goals. And even with this year, we've been working on the strategic plan. It was, I think Dr. Hackett discussed it at our October 24th meeting and went through the strategic plan, the goals, the tenants that our district is working off of.
The school improvement plans.
Yeah, and the school, and I was also going to say that, the school improvement plans. We talked about that recently in December. So, I do believe that our budget reflects those, I mean, those very critical elements that we've talked about as a school committee.
So, lastly, I'll say, I guess from my point of view, that obviously, a lot of people are very frustrated and feel not heard, and have, you know, put up a wall and are feeling defensive. And I think that that is felt deeply within the district. And so, naturally, people put up a wall on the other side. And I think tonight, I felt like there was some good conversations, some in the hallway and some in here, about, you know, a real genuine desire on the part of the district and on the part of a lot of the parents that we've talked to, whether it's at, you know, PISC or in the hallway or other times, to sort of come out of our corners and not, you know, we're all on the same side. And maybe just for a moment, put aside what you think the right answer is. Unless, we'll have, you know, a process and a conversation, and we'll hopefully get to a much better place. But, you know, the bottom line is, you know, every, every parent here cares deeply about their kids and about their kids' friends, and every administrator, every faculty member, teacher, educator, school committee member. You know, many of us are parents with kids in the district on IEPs, you know, or otherwise. And, you know, we're all here for the same reason. You know, we're volunteer jobs, and it's really to try to do what's best for the kids, so.
And when we come together with curiosity and inquiry, rather than starting with a solution, we get to better outcomes for kids in the end.
Absolutely.
It's helpful to hear the feedback. I agree, so.
Yeah, and we appreciate the advocacy, because it definitely makes a difference. And sometimes it's hard to hear, but we need to hear it, so.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments on the budget?
Just a thought, when we, when we do sort of formally get to this discussion and some presentation, I, I'm, so I have a request actually to you, Mr. Chair, and to the superintendent. Glad this was being recorded tonight by Wing Cam. I think, I'd like us to be kind of deliberate, to go back and be sure we really understood all of the public comment. There were, I do agree, there might be some misunderstandings. There's some fear under there, there, but there were some very reasonable and straightforward questions.
Yep.
Some questions about things that really has quite a story to tell. For instance, what are you doing to reduce out-of-district placement cost? What a great story, we could talk about that. And I like to think that when we get to this conversation, there's sort of three pieces to it. I think there's the past. I think the past can go back to 2007, but, you know, people may think differently. I mean, I think we can talk about what did we used, what do we used to do? And then there's the present. And I feel like this is a community that would suggest present to sort of 2021 to today, because that's really when a lot of this really, we saw a lot of organized advocacy around this. What have we done in the present? Because there is a lot that's happened that we don't put on a school committee agenda. And then I think that third piece is sort of the future. I like to think I'm data-driven, I'm not globe-driven. We should be data-driven, and we should be clear about what questions we're asking. And the last thing I would say is, this is a hard job for everybody at the table and the people that support us, whether we're paid or not. So, folks in the audience tonight who seemed frustrated, like how, you know, you're talking about this, where does this get done? Where do these conversations take place? Sometimes they happen on a phone call at 10 o'clock in the morning with an administrator. Sometimes they happen at 11 o'clock at night. I don't think there's a member of the school committee that's shy about calling up an administrator to tell them what a great job they've done, or to express frustration, or to ask tough questions. I push hard. I know other colleagues of mine on this committee push really, really hard.
And I'm kind of sick of it.
What's that? So, through it all, though, however those conversations go, and sometimes I push hard, and I get, I get pushback. There's always a level of respect and trust. I respect everybody who's working towards these goals. I expect, I particularly respect the ladies in the front row tonight, Janelle and Emma, Lori Kirby. I think people, it's sad, people are quick to sort of, you know, throw stones at people. That's really unfortunate. And let's not criticize people's attitudes if you haven't actually sat down and had a conversation with them. I would say that.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that it has, and I don't diminish at all the frustration in the community, because, I mean, I definitely, definitely hear and feel that. But it has a real chilling effect. You know, we can talk here at these meetings, but if we feel, you know, if it becomes difficult to do that without, you know, every, you know, stupid question you ask being, you know, weaponized against you, well, then it pushes that conversation. We can't talk to each other, but it means that we're taking up, you know, the administrator's time, having, you know, five individual conversations with superintendent or whatever, and each of those quests, one of those might trigger then a follow-up conversation. And, and so, it, you know, I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful tonight. You know, what I heard from the community, I heard a lot of passion, but I also heard a lot of desire to really work together and solve the problem. And, and so, I think it's, you know, it's a really interesting defining moment where our community will make a choice. And I'm hoping that as we go through this process, you know, we choose to work together to, you know, all be on the same side and figure out what the best thing is. We can make the other choice and just, you know, keep going back to our sides, and, and, you know, we'll still have the, I mean, we still care, we're still, you know, administrators care, we're going to do this, you know, either way, we do what we think is best. But I think there's a real opportunity, and I really hope our community chooses, you know, the better path.
So, for clarification, as it relates to the budget and the feedback you had tonight, right?
Yes, this is the budget session, yes.
Mr. Brady has made, I think, a really good suggestion. We'll bring back those data to the February 13th meeting. It's kind of a, you know, an entry into the discussion, just to try to clarify. I think Mr. Nixon's comment about we need to kind of go back and listen and make sure that we did hear, and were there questions in there that we should also make part of the 13th. You know, work will happen between now and then. My goal is to get out to all the parent associations, so I may hear more at that point. But in terms of budget, is there anything specific to this topic that you would like us to, to bring to you with more specificity on Tuesday, week from today? And just in the general question, are there any questions for tonight? Or are there questions that you, or other information that you want to have? I was really want to be super clear. We are at 4.74%, and we're level service. So, I appreciate the comments about going back in and looking at how we're spending certain funds, but I can tell you right now, you saw the per pupil. You see the other expenses, the majority of those other expenses are contracted services. We spend very little and have very little discretionary dollars for supply. We have been flat funding supplies for a long time. We've been flat funding athletics for a long time. You know this, right? This is the story, you're, you have the through line on this, right? And that's what's hard, is because people engage when they are passionate about something, and, but they don't also see the work that's happened up to that point, and that's just the way it is. So, but I just want to be clear, this is a level service budget, and I'm guessing that as we go through this process, people are going to want to push on us with that number, right? Because that happened last year, it happened the year before. So, we're happy to bring back anything you'd like. We can bring back some priorities, what it would happen if we had more money available. I can tell you, what you won't see on that list of priorities is a dollar figure that's unknown for a program that we haven't even talked about, right? For literacy. I just want to manage expectations around that. You would likely see really staffing requests to enhance our programs, that kind of thing, so.
And you also define our, the amount we have been spending on professional development, because I think we've also made a fairly good investment in professional development, not just last year, but over the last several years. I know, I've heard you say in our public meetings that our professional development is some of the deepest you've seen in any school district.
Absolutely.
So, I would like to get an idea of how much we're spending on professional development in this district, and.
Some of the topics.
And in this, and in the next budget, how much teacher voice and choice is part of that? And just, you know, I think it would be helpful to the community. I heard that come up a couple times this evening, too. They're curious about what we do spend on training our teachers. And I think the new mentors that we've put in for new teachers fits into that as well.
And I also wonder, you know, we, you said there is this passion, and we have this level services budget. So, is there the opportunity to put forth, you know, this, this is what it would look like if we were to request more? This is what we could do with it, you know? Is there, to your point about, when you talk about supplies, I also think about curriculum. So, is there an opportunity to say? And yeah, to your point, we don't know the exact amount we need or what we would spend it on, but we're hearing from the community. So, is there an opportunity now to put in, to propose putting in more money for curriculum? And, you know, we're hearing it from the community. Eventually, maybe it goes to town meeting, and it doesn't get supported, but it sounds like we have that passion, we have people who are excited about it. So, why not take advantage of that to get more curriculum for our teachers? I've never met a teacher who said, no, I'm good. I don't, I don't want any new books, I don't want any new materials, I'm good. You know, I think if we can think about that, is there a way to put some of that in the budget? Because that's what we're hearing from folks. I'd be curious to see what that would look like, you know?
And I think we can do the same exercise that you suggested on before. We can provide, what have we done, what have we purchased, you know, across all the content areas? And then, yeah, if we had more money, if we had $100,000 more, here's what we'd do with it. If we had $200,000, we could do like levels of what would we do with another, you know.
Yeah, so maybe we show that, okay. $300,000 for curriculum, that's going to make it a 4.83%, you know, not even, I'm not doing the math, but whatever, just to show that option. Because I think having those options at least is helpful for us as a committee to see. You know, if it's a difference between 4.76 and 4.79, then hey, let's do, you know, the additional $200,000 or whatever it is. And I'm just making up that number.
No, I understand.
But to have something in there.
Every percent is $660,000, right?
I think, oh, go ahead.
And just to clarify, when you were, this is just a clarification question. So, when you were saying that people, we have, just to remind everybody that this is a 4.74% budget right now, and people will push on it. You're talking about the process that this budget will undergo after, after the committee votes on it. You're talking about the process as it goes through the town and the finance committee, and then as it comes into town meeting.
Correct, correct. And if you remember last year.
Those are the people pushing on it.
Correct. I mean, last year, if you remember, you actually approved for recommended budget of a little over 4%. I don't remember what the actual percentage was. But then we went through the process, and we, you know, we got the feedback, and we came back, you came back as a committee and discussed it, and we made some decisions. And you revoked, revoted that number to bring us in at the 3.76, I believe, is what we're at this year. So, you know, the process. So, you know, the process is kind of iterative, but yeah, the point is that, you know, we have, it's all well and fine for us to do it, and then we have to try to get the support for it, in light of all the needs you heard tonight, and, you know, there is a whole nother side of this town that needs stuff, too, so.
Yeah, I think, I like these ideas of, first of all, you know, the budget, you know, the base budget, what it needs to be to operate, you know, level service, but I like the idea of whether it's curriculum or professional development, you know, having a few, you know, these are the things we could layer in if we did, to the extent that it's not over, that it's doable, it would be helpful to know which of those things are, you know, like PD for Wilson or OG or other literacy-related things, and maybe other areas that weren't, you know-
Like math.
Like math, yeah.
Talk about math.
Which math came up.
Science.
Math came up tonight as well.
Health and wellness standards.
But, but so, so there's a, there's a bunch of areas that, that it would be, it would be helpful, if for nothing else. I mean, we may come back and, and vote the budget, the base budget with nothing else, because we think that's all we can get through town meeting, but it'd be great for the town to know, because maybe you get a motion on the floor to, you know, fund the math program, so we don't have to send everyone to Russian math, sorry, Russian math. But anyway, so I like that direction.
But my request, Dr. Hackett, is that they be, if you're coming back to us with recommendations, as Mr. Brady suggested, sort of tiers of what we're going to do, that it be realistic options, because I heard you say, we don't even know what the scope and scale, when I hear curriculum, I hear curriculum, full curriculum replacement, which is different than supporting the evidence-based curriculums that we have in place already. So, for example, Mr. Brady said that his son is using Ufly at his elementary school, and if that's something that should be available to every teacher in the district, because some of our teachers have been using it through district supplies, then, you know, it would be the cost to provide that to everyone. Because I feel like otherwise, we're jumping to a solution before we define the problem, which is what we just said we weren't going to do.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I completely agree, completely agree, yeah.
And can I just say, for the record, a motion from town meeting from the floor to increase our budget for a specific item has previously been ruled out of order. Town meeting can always choose to increase our budget, but they can't tether it to a specific item, although it is well-intentioned.
Fair point.
In the first year I was here, if we remember, we were, we were, the motion from the floor was to cut three teachers.
Right.
Which I responded, you can cut the money, but we can't cut the teachers, and that's so, to the, you know, you go the other way, too.
It goes both ways.
It could go the-
Rubs both ways.
Yes, well-stated.
Do you have what you need?
I, yeah, and you know where I am, so if you have-
And program improvement, we've talked for a long time about, that this is one of the few districts without a theater arts, full theater arts program. If we're, if we're asking for program improvement dollars, I'd love to know the cost of that as well.
All right.
Any?
I, I would love to know that as well.
Me, too.
Are there other areas that we, the questions you have regarding budget or things you want to know?
I'd also like to know if our, if our administrative staff has any recommendations that we haven't thought of, because-
Don't have to ask that, that will be, yeah, I'll have them-
The kids in a candy store.
If I don't get them tonight by email, I know I'll have them, yeah.
So can I ask, given the hour, are we, are we skipping the executive session?
My preference would be to do it, I don't think it would take too long, and then we can stay short on it, and if we need to revisit, we could do that.
And I, and I'm asking only because I think, I think Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin have done a tremendous amount of work, and as you've heard me say before, if there are any budget consequences of that exercise, we should know about it and have that conversation in case there's something that's not in the budget that needs to be, and some of that conversation's better had in executive session.
Right, and it's up to the committee, I mean, we, you, we can move it if you'd like to. I mean, I can say, short-term, we would not say for next year there would be any budget consequences, but you may have questions that may lead to budget consequences, so.
Would, would it be too late to have the executive session prior to the budget meeting next week?
No, and I think also the topic around security, depending, obviously, you know, on what we're talking about, there are other funding sources that we've already been leveraging to make things happen.
Right.
So, you know, and unless you're, unless we're talking about personnel, or, you know, there are other ways for us to fund certain kinds of things, and we've talked publicly about funding cameras, so we are hopeful that this February vacation cameras are going to be installed in, at Morocco and possibly also at Lake In, you know, that baseline kind of camera set, so that we're trying to standardize on, and, you know, also be consistent with Lynch, the new Lynch being kind of the model as to, you know, the back, the backend structure of it. So, but I would not anticipate coming to you for operating dollars for anything related to the topic of security, because we have other avenues, that rental revolving account has thankfully has been opened up for us as some of those possibilities, so.
Well, if this, if this what Ms. Berkstrom was suggesting, if doing it before our next meeting, you know, it buys you even a little more time to kind of maybe cross some Ts and dot some Is, because there's great work that's already been done, and we can certainly block out time to actually pay attention to that and engage in some conversation, I'd be okay with that.
Yep.
All right.
How do other committee members feel?
Make a motion to move the executive session prior to the meeting on January 30th, unless anybody objects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brady?
No, I was just saying, it's fine, I may need to call in, it's difficult for me to get anywhere before-
Oh, just start at the same time, Mr. Brady. Just do the executive session first and then the meeting.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, me, too, I couldn't be there any earlier than six either.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
All right, so we will move that, and-
Motion to adjourn.
Which brings us to a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, everyone, thank you to the community.
Thank you, WinCam.
Thanks, WinCam.